Thank you. I call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. I would now like to call for nominations and balloting for the office of president of Board of Education. Would someone like to nominate somebody?
I nominate Don Sutcliffe.
Thank you, a second. Okay, and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Don, I'd like to read you your oath, and please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of board president
of the office of board president
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now nominating and balloting for vice president, is there a motion?
I nominate Jen Horsh.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Jen, please repeat after me, stand and raise your right hand.
I need to adjust my screen.
Ready?
Yes.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of vice president
of the office of vice president
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities.
Thank you, and Don, you may take over the meeting.
Barb, don't we have to swear Ellen and Cheryl in?
We can do that, they have been sworn in before, but we can do that as well. Ellen?
Okay.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of board member
of the office of board member
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities.
Thank you, and Cheryl, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
the duties of the office of board member
the duty of the office of board member
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, and Don, you can take over now.
Thank you, Barb.
You're welcome.
Well, I'd like to officially welcome Superintendent Sortisio, officially, to our first meeting. He's officially on board, he's been on a number of meetings throughout the last month. Jeff, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Don, I appreciate the welcome, and I want you to know that the invitations to the previous meetings really made the transition smoother for me. You know, from far away, I got to get to know each of you a little bit, you know, through Zoom, and hear about some issues that were important to the board, so I think that was time well spent.
Sounds good. So Ellen or Jen, who is going to read?
Jen, did you want the job back, or you want me to do it?
I'm okay, unless you want a break, I'm fine.
Oh, okay, then, no, I can, so what are you saying, I can read?
You can read, it's all good.
I'll read, okay. At this point during the meeting, members of the Board of Education may request to have any item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. And now we go to the next part. Approval of consensus items five through nine. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes. We need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Now we're going to the regular board meeting, and another, is there a presentation? There's no presentation, is there? Now we go to request. Okay, at this point during the meeting, members of the Board of Education may request to have any items removed from the consent agenda considered separately. And now we go to approval of consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
This is the public guide comment section, approximate position and time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet, well, of course, that would mean anybody who submitted questions should designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. Is there, are there any questions?
There were no questions.
All right then. We go to appointments for Susanna. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Beverly Susanna be permanently appointed as a bus attendant, effective August 12, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
And upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Brian Rowland be permanently appointed as a bus mechanic foreman, effective July 30, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Brian's over when Mark retired from the bus garage. He has come to us with experience, and he's proven his way, that he's done a great job over in the bus garage, even during these difficult times.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Donna Bender be permanently appointed as a senior clerk typist, effective July 30, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Megan Vicarello be permanently appointed as a senior clerk typist, effective August 9, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Noah Meister is hereby appointed on probation as a microcomputer repair technician, effective August 3, 2020, and ending on February 2, 2021. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level nine, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, Noah is here today with us, Noah?
Thank you, guys.
You haven't been approved yet, so let's just let you know, he's here. So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There it is, appreciate it, everyone, I appreciate it greatly.
We've not finished yet. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried, there we go.
Now
There it is, there it is. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it, guys.
Welcome, Noah.
Glad to be part.
I have a feeling we're going to be, you know, just after what happened with this past school year, that micro repair is going to be really key to keeping keeping this learning process moving.
I think you're going to keep you busy, yes.
That's what I'm looking forward to.
Sounds good, welcome aboard.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Summer school appointments. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following summer school appointments be approved. Cheryl Dunmire, substitute teacher aide, Thomas Wall, substitute teacher aide, Elaine Funk, teacher aide, three weeks, and substitute teacher aide, Judy Rizone, teacher aide, three weeks, substitute teacher aide, Rebecca Lape, teacher aide, six weeks, Lori Mohan, teacher aide, six weeks, Kristy Height, teacher, Sarah Fiorella, teacher, Michelle Fakitas, teacher, Jamie Peterson, speech therapist, Dana Fazler-Larry, speech therapist, Gabriel Rodriguez, substitute teacher, Haley Hirk, substitute teacher.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this mostly for special education piece appointment?
Yes.
It's all for that.
Yes.
The only summer school we even run is for the specialization students.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following summer school appointments be approved for drivers. E. Peter Belgium, Mon Best, Michael Best, Julian Blanco, Janet Vonser, Linda Chris, Danielle Gabel, Kathleen Janko, Cynthia Casper, Corinne Kennethck, Heidi Mahoney, Judith Plesch, Ellen Polinsky, Bradley Susanna, Noel Sisti, Vincent Baco, Paul Winter. Attendance, E. Peter Belgium, Julian Blanco, Cynthia Casper, Corinne Kennethck, Lori Mohan, Judith Plesch, Frances Phillips, Ellen Polinsky, Beverly Susanna, Noel Sisti, Diane Strong, Mary Tara Shavitz, Joanne Zelinski, Diane Zimmer. Bus nurse, can you move that up a little bit? Darlene Smith.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Excess library items, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, outdated, inaccurate, and/or worn-out library books and reference materials be accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, one 2002 Chrysler Voyage minivan, VIN number as follows, which is out of service and not worth repairing, be accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Revision of budget adoption, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resolution to appropriate money from the general fund for the purpose of meeting contingency expenditures per seen for the period between July 1, 2020, and August 5, 2020, be approved. Further, this resolution replaces the contingency budget resolution with provision for a revote approved on June 30, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion?
I haven't seen this revision, have we, has everybody else seen the revision of the budget?
Yeah, so to kind of put it in the Cliff Notes here, there's been some, well, lack of guidance from state ed and the governor as to how we handled it, and I think Michael Looby can jump in here a little bit better, explaining basically what we need to do and what we're going to do to get us through until August 5.
Yesterday, after the board's special meeting adopting our recommendation for a contingency budget, officials at the state education department weighed in in a meeting with Bosse's district superintendents, saying that their version of the issue is rather than doing a contingency budget, you should do an appropriation for short terms until the budget is adopted. And their view was that if we did not do that, then you would not retain the option to do a revote. We think that's incorrect. We've been in consultation with the State Bar Association, with others, and with some bond councils, and we know that at least three school districts down on Long Island have done it exactly the way we did it yesterday, but we now have a situation where officials at the state education department are offering a different view. It's based on questions that were in the guidance that the state education department issued prior to 1993, when the law changed. Under the old law, you could have multiple revotes, and there was a number of circumstances in which it was fairly typical not to have a budget on July 1. So what they did is they authorized using available funds to authorize payments until the budget was in fact passed. What we're suggesting now is that we go along with the state education department's proposal, not because we think you need to, because it eliminates any question about whether or not the state education department would support you if you did want, if you did decide to revote, to do a revote after the governor finally issues the rules. As of about 10 minutes ago, there is no new executive order, there was one yesterday that had to do with village elections and had to do with petitions, but it said nothing about revotes for the state school budgets at all. So this is a precautionary recommendation.
So Laura, you might be able to jump in here now. So we're going to appropriate $3.3 million in funds from the general fund to meet the contingency expenditures from now until August 5. And hopefully we have some guidance by then from SED and the governor of, you know, how we go about a revote, and, you know, whether we go contingent budget or, you know, go for a new budget, so.
At this time, what we're thinking is, we've been told that we would have a revote potentially by the end of July, so we figured August 5 would get us through till then. Where people might think there aren't expenditures that need to go on, we still have to clean the buildings, we still have to maintain the properties, a lot of repairs go on in the summer, a lot of scheduling happens, we have to pay salaries, we have to keep operating so that when we open up in September, we're able to open up as either a virtual school or an in-person school, which we don't have any guidance on that yet, that's the reason for the $3.3 million price tag.
I mean, during this time period, what if, what if someone use our facility, technically, would we have to do it under the idea that
you're only authorizing me to spend for contingent expenditures, and use of facilities are not a contingent expenditure, so we would not be able to do it without charging them 100% of the cost of using the facilities.
Ellen, you're muted.
So?
You're still muted, Ellen.
What? No one can hear me? Okay, unmuted, okay. So we're still technically on the austerity budget, we don't have a regular budget, correct?
We operate under the austerity rules until there is a budget in place, and then we follow whatever guidelines that budget permits.
Right, so the only real change is just the language we're using for our adoption, correct?
Right, the only, the only real change is rather than being actually under the contingent budget, you're under a spending authorization pending a budget.
Right, then we have to follow austerity rules, isn't it?
That's correct.
Yeah. Right, I just, I can't get it all, I'd like to skim it, I didn't know it was available.
Jeff, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, thanks, Don, so, you know, Michael and I talked earlier today, and I reached out to some folks yesterday, including the leadership in NISCIS and NISBA. Both of those groups were in agreement, as Michael said earlier, that we should be able to stay with the contingent budget and be eligible for a revote. SED came out with a counter argument to that just late yesterday, as we heard earlier. So it's really out of the preponderance of caution that I do recommend that we follow through with this new motion, the contingency spending motion, just to make sure that any decision about a revote remains in the hands of this Board of Education and not by some whim or change in a potential executive order that we just can't foresee at this point. So it's again, just out of that preponderance of caution, following through with what Michael put forth for us to consider, for you to consider. Again, just to make sure that if the board does want to go for a second vote, you have that opportunity.
I think at this point, we're not going to hear much more from the state education department over the next month. The next word will come from the governor. We got a email from state education department at 5:10 today that said that they believe that the guidance that the district superintendents received yesterday is at this point what the department is going to provide. While it appears that not every district chose to do it the same way, I've not heard any talk about providing additional information or guidance.
So that's real clear.
Yeah.
And then I know, I think Senator Galvin's office has sent a letter to SED asking for the two districts in his region, you know, basically what's going to happen with us in Chictowaga with our revote. So they're asking as well to, not only along with us, but our elected officials are doing it as well too, so. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Superintendent's report, anything, Jeff?
Yeah, just, just real briefly, I'd like to take a moment once again to extend my thanks to this Board of Education, Eden community, and all the folks associated with the search process. As was mentioned earlier, this meeting culminates my first day as an Eden employee, and I certainly look forward to many, 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 many more. Special thank you to Barb Tomassolo and everyone I met today for the warm welcome. In the coming weeks, I plan to get to work on my entry plan and schedule meetings with a whole host of folks. I look forward to getting to know more about the community and how I might help it to prosper and grow. And again, many thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question, Jeff, just quickly? And I just mean, we don't know right now anything, any guidance from the governor, whether school's going to open live session, or whether it's going to, again, be remote. Are you planning to at least have some plans for both contingencies at this time, I mean? So, next week I have meetings set up with the administrative team, and one of the big questions I'm going to have for them is what work has been done so far to plan for a variety of options, whether we're fully remote, we're back in in-person instruction, or a hybrid component of the two. Shortly thereafter, I'm looking to develop a return-to-school team, and I'm going to spend the next few days determining what roles and responsibilities and personnel should be part of that group. There certainly would be room for board representation on that group as well. I'm not in, you know, again, being in day one, I'm not sure what's already, what structure's already there, so rather than reinvent it, I want to do a little bit of learning. You are right that we are not going to hear anything, or maybe it was Michael, they're not going to hear anything for a while. The next Board of Regents meeting is July 14, where they're set to name a new commissioner, I believe. We were told that we would have guidelines from the state and SED sometime in June in order to provide ample time to plan for September, while June is gone. And the next meeting, the Board of Regents is for a couple of weeks. So we are left with utilizing information that we're gleaning from other areas, such as the Department of Health, the CDC, other states who have reopened, the American Association of Pediatric Medicine, and trying to gather information to make the best plans we can before we actually have any guidance from the state. Yeah, if you are taking from board, I'd like to be a part of that, of any, you know, just for suggestions and planning on reopening. Sure, and I appreciate that, so once we've got the structure identified, I'll throw that back to the board for discussion and suggestions from the group, and, you know, I'm not limiting it to one member or anything like that, again, this is really just the very beginnings of creating a return-to-school team. Thank you for that interest. Oh, you're very welcome, I wasn't saying, he's doing it on your first day, I just thought that we don't know when, that you don't want to be hit the last moment with either, either or, nobody knows what's going to happen right now. Yeah, hey, you didn't catch me surprised by that question, I think I answered it fairly well. Oh, you answered it very well. You can't, you can't know what's, you have to know what's going on before you make a plan, that I often failed to do that, and had some problems because of that. Any other questions for me?
I don't think so. All right, so board report roundtable, anybody?
Well, personally, I just wanted to say I, along with two other members, had the opportunity to attend graduation last Monday, and it really was amazing, it was very heartwarming, it was a super intimate setting, it was great to see the parents be able to get so up close to the stage, to taking pictures, they could give their kids hugs right away as soon as they came off the stage, like it really was all those little areas for them to take pictures, I mean, it really was a beautiful ceremony, and it was the hard work of a ton of people within the district and outside of the employees, and it was, it was amazing, and then I watched the video. Last night, of course, I was having connectivity issues, so I had to wait actually till this morning to watch it. But that was beautiful too, I got a little misty-eyed, I'm not going to lie, and I don't even have any kids graduating, but I think it's just been a crazy year, and it was just great to see everybody happy, and I don't know, it was just, it was wonderful, I'm just happy for everybody.
I was, I was going to mention that too, I had the honor to be there the third night, and it was wonderful, and I'm just so impressed with the job that everybody did. Congratulations to everybody who was on that committee to put that together, because it was wonderful. And I've also And I've also heard from some people who were, had relatives graduating, and they just remarked on how beautiful and personal it was, and they loved it. So, a job well done. It was great.
I agree. I was there Wednesday, and I, I don't think since my own graduation, X number of years ago, I'll say, that a graduation has been as personal as this was, in the detail and the time and effort put into making this, in spite of the situation, the best graduation, and even in some respects, better than a, quote, "normal" graduation. I don't think any parent, I'm an aunt, and my responsibility when my two nieces and nephew graduated were to get up as close to the stage and get as best of pictures as I could. Well, that never happened, because people are jockeying to get pictures, and the lighting was off. I mean, photo ops were amazing during this type of graduation. And any kind of feedback I've heard from my neighborhood, from around the town, and on social media, is that it was absolutely wonderful. So hats off to the committee, hats off to the district, and everyone and anyone that supported it. These guys got, these seniors, rightfully so, were very blessed to have the recognition that they had this year.
So as of having one graduate, it really hit home this morning. Similar to Jen, I actually had some connectivity issues last night, and I don't know who was deciding to text at 1:44 in the morning. Anyways, but it was, I can't thank the graduating committee that put it together, and Matt Gould and his team. It was, it was phenomenal. It it came full circle. It was, it was fun Thursday night when she walked across the stage, but then to see it all put together with the speeches, the scholarships being given out. It was funny, a bunch of parents were asking me when they opened their envelope, well, who got the scholarships? I'm like, sorry, you got to wait. They were, I think a lot of them were, you know, it drove them to, you know, wait until 7 o'clock last night to jump on, and I think I saw at one point, there were like 90 people on, on watching it at once. But I thought they did a great job, and it really hit home this morning when I finished watching the final production, so hats off to all those involved. All right, anything else on graduation? I got a couple other things I just wanted to bring up here. So Barb sent out the job descriptions for the various subcommittees and liaisons. Let's take a look at that as we move forward into our next meeting. And if you want to come off of one or get on another one, I think Marlene mentioned she wanted to come off of one and go on a different one. But think about that. So, one thing that I want to kind of put forth as we move through these meetings is when we get to the board roundtable, so if you're on the advocacy committee, and I'm just going to point to Jen on this one, because I know how passionate she is about it. But I'd like to have, like, one person be the chair of that subcommittee and just report back to the board, like, what might be going on in those subcommittees. So, you know, what might be going on within curriculum, technology, and personalization? It might be just as simple as, hey, they got a meeting coming up, and I'll have more to report next month. But I think if we're able to do that, we're going to stay on top of these things. I know there's a few hot topics that'll be out there for next year, you know, that we're going to want, you know, monthly updates on. And I got this idea from another board that I'm on, and we have to report out, and I happen to have education for that one. But it's just helping our meetings and people stay on top of the different committees that are out there and the people that are doing the work, and it's being reported back. So just start looking into that, and we'll figure that out by our next meeting. And then Jeff, I know we talked about this, you know, in the interview process and things along those lines, was possibly doing a retreat. Being in where we're at right now, I don't know if it's, I think last year we did it in July, but I don't know when the proper timing of that might possibly be for for this board, with you coming on board with, you know, the work that needs to be done in regards to, you know, coming back to school here in September, going through another budget process. So just want to get your thoughts on that and the rest of the board's thoughts on, you know, when might be the right time to sit down and do a retreat? Is it, is it the summer, or is it maybe this fall?
You know, that's a, that's a really good question, Don, and I, and I've been contemplating that as well. Through, during the interview process and through my discussion, my entry plan, I talked about doing a more of a workshop discussion around goal-setting, which is important, of course. But in terms of a retreat, I think the work that we have in front of us in the short term regarding the budget and regarding return to school really takes precedent over a retreat at this point. I've been part of retreats that have happened in the summer months, and I've also been part of retreats that have happened in January. And you know, particularly those of you who've been on a school board for a long time, there's a lot of energy early on, and sometimes that mid-year get-together also serves as a recharge opportunity for the group as well. So I think that short-term, our focus should be on those two things I mentioned, the budget and whatever happens with that, and if it is a contingent budget, really understanding what that means, not just for our school, but for our community, or a revote. And then obviously, the copys amount of work that's going to go into reopening schools. I would think that if we are going to retreat before the school year, it's going to have to be sometime in later August.
I'm kind of more thinking, you know, maybe a mid-year thing based on the work that we have ahead of us. Just my opinion.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'm okay with that as well. I think, like Jeff said, I mean, we have two very important tasks in front of us, and I just, at this point, that should be our focus. And then we can always move towards reworking goals when we're kind of a little more settled and things calm down a little bit, hopefully, fingers crossed.
I agree. There's a lot of work to do, Jeff. You're absolutely right. Very short time, depending on what they let us know about opening schools or not.
That's all I have in regards to any board reports.
I don't know, is everybody aware that the New York State Association is giving a two-part lecture on school reopenings? Is everybody aware of that?
I've seen it.
The flyer that came? Yeah.
Very good.
So our next meeting is slated for August 5, but I have a feeling we're going to be meeting prior to that, so watch your texts, watch your emails as we move forward in regards to when the next meeting might be, once we get some guidance.
Community members should watch the Eden site for updates if there is another board meeting scheduled.
Probably, given the circumstances, we, we all need to be real diligent about checking our text messages and our emails for, to keep up to speed with everything that's coming at us.
Yeah, I apologize. I shouldn't have kept you waiting. I should have looked at all the texts that were flying by. I, it was my fault tonight.
I mean, moving forward, just so we can have the information before.
Agree. I looked at texts. I would have seen what was happening tonight, so I agree with you on her position.
Okay. And we don't have executive session, correct? So we go to adjournment? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education meeting be adjourned at 7:47 PM?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.